Okay. So, for anyone who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, please be seated. Can we have a report out of closed session?
Nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you. And we have some, for the mayor's announcements, we have an exciting thing happening right now. We're going to call up our new attorney and swear her in. Autumn Luna, welcome. All right, so, we're going to swear you in, welcome.
Thank you.
This is a very exciting day for us.
I'm over the moon.
Awesome. So, raise your right hand. I, Autumn Luna, do solemnly affirm.
I, Autumn Luna, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
In the capacity of City Attorney for the City of Eureka.
In the capacity of City Attorney for the City of Eureka.
Well, welcome. We are a lucky, lucky group.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, next, in our mayor's announcements, we actually have a presentation. Amy Rock from Cal Poly HSU to present item B1, Community Well-Being Survey, presented by Cal Poly HSU Department of Geography, Environment, and Spatial Analysis. Welcome.
Thank you, green light is on. All right. Yeah, as mentioned, I'm Dr. Amy Rock, and I am with the Department of Geography, Environment, and Spatial Analysis at Cal Poly Humboldt, and I brought a handful of my students with me this evening. And we are very excited to be embarking upon the Eureka survey. We started this, the intent was to do this as an annual survey. We started this in 2020, which was not an auspicious year. So, it got a little derailed, and then we skipped it last year for many of the same reasons that we didn't complete it in 2020. But we're hoping this year that we'll actually be able to kick it off and complete it. And the idea is to do a community wellness survey. So, there will be some sections on this survey related to community questions, another section on environment, both local and regional, one on personal well-being, one on economic well-being, and one on transportation. And the intent of the survey is to provide the city with data that they can use to identify and address issues and opportunities. And the data will be confidential, and only aggregated results will be presented to the city, so no personally identifying information will be released. The questions are still under review with both council and the mayor and various other city folks, and the university's institutional review board, but we hope to have it ready for release by the end of March. So, it will be out there for folks to participate in during the month of April. And it will be open to all Eureka residents over the age of 18. So, are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Councilmember Arroyo?
When you, after you've gathered the gated data, excuse me, do you anticipate doing any kind of geospatial analysis? Or what is the, I know we're talking about a survey. Is there going to be a mapping component as well?
Most likely, most likely, yep. Ultimately, we'd like to present some sort of an ongoing website, you know, as we do this year after year, so that we can sort of envision what's happening during the current year and maybe look at change over time. And again, all that data will be aggregated. But, yeah, we're going to do some stuff with it too, but the intent is to provide the city with data that it could use as well. Yep.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thanks, and I'm excited for this. Are you going door-to-door, right? Or is that, that's part of it, or no, it's?
No, that was, we talked about doing that initially, but, you know, given certain circumstances, we think that's probably not the best idea. So, I think the intent is that it will be publicized in various places that the city is able to do. We'll publicize it as well. It's going to be largely internet-based. But if, you know, health, health conditions within the county permit, we'll maybe try to do some in-person sites, maybe, you know, at the mall or someplace like that where we could have a table where people could participate. But we're not going to do door-to-door because of the various risks involved.
Sure. So, this is something that we could help promote once it's happening, just to make sure that.
Yeah, we would love it if you would help promote it. That would be fantastic.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you. Other questions?
Looking at councilmember Maltin. No further questions then?
All right.
Thank you so much.
You are very welcome. We're very excited to do this, so thank you for the opportunity.
Look forward to the results.
All right. So, now is our public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be, will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. And do we have anybody that is here to speak? Hi, James.
Hi. The green light means it's on?
That means it's on, yeah.
So, pretty much the same thing I always have to tell you. Eureka's on a downward spiral, a disgusting one at that. Soon to be like Portland, Oregon. My daughter is recently off heroin for, like, I'd say she's been off about a year. She had a little baby. She was doing plenty of it before that, and the meth. Anyway, she got booted out of the place she's living in, not because of drugs, because she's off that, but she had to move. And so, she was over here at Super 8 for about a week. Everything was pretty good there, but now she's about 100 feet over to this side at that Laguna motel, and that place is a drug den. I mean, it is full of drug addicts, not just inside the buildings, but outside as well. We got prostitution going on. Next to the dumpster, there's a big old queen-size mattress there, shooting up in plain sight. I was there for 10 minutes, I seen that. And I would never stay there, I tell you that. It's, it's unsafe for anybody. This whole town's unsafe, and I don't see anybody doing anything about it. When you back our syringe exchange, it was caught selling heroin to the public from their syringe exchange and handing out meth pipes, and you do nothing about it, that kind of, kind of sends the wrong message. You might as well just get a sign and say, "Welcome to Eureka. Slam all the dope you want in public. Wear a sleeping bag over your head. Break out our car windows. Feel free to aggressively panhandle. The police won't do nothing. They've been told to stand down. You guys need to do something about cleaning this city up. It's disgusting. Four years I've been coming up here telling you about the needle litter. In one ear, out the other side, man, get a clue. Clean your city up."
Thank you, James.
Well, I guess, in that vein, in that vein, good to see everyone. I see from double masked to no mask, from COVID tracer in the community, that's the American version of Stasi, I guess, to unmasked. Good to see your faces. Too bad we're missing our dear mayor, Ms. Seaman, and our council member, Ms. Maltin. Well, anyway, first page when you Google Eureka, Eureka, California, you Google it, okay? So, you can't argue with it. You can't point a single person out and call him a Nazi or a stalker or similar things. It's just reality. It's political reality that you are responsible for, for a great part. First page of Google, okay? Previously the center of the logging and timber industry, time where in the declining economy has plunged. Eureka into an epicenter of poverty, drug addiction, and mental illness. The result is one of the worst per capita homeless problems in the nation. Eureka is in the 15th percentile of safety, meaning 85% of other communities are safer. In 15 cities of, 15% of cities are equally or more dangerous. That's reality. Now you wonder why tourism plummets. Now you wonder why businesses go belly up. Now you wonder if I Googled that as a German tourist, and I spare you the German TripAdvisor reviews, I know you don't understand German in the first place, but it's earth-shattering. It's earth-shattering. Sure, we don't get tourists here anymore, because this is a shh hole. Yeah? And was, it started with bringing the tro, the needle-shaped Trojan horse of hatcher into this town with the corrupt terrorist, Brandy Wilson. This disgusting, despicable person that was even too bad to be, to be allowed to live in, to operate in Chicago. Here she was good enough, right? So, here's the deal. One little comment from Los Coles outpost, AKA the Pravda of Humboldt County. You walk in lockstep, they walk in lockstep, was lockstep with you guys. There's a comment, "We can use any help we can get fixing this city up. I made the mistake of reading the TripAdvisor tourist ratings on Eureka this morning. Super depressing, but I can't argue with anything these people had to say about the city. I've got countless friends who've explained to me for years that Eureka is just about to totally turn it around and become amazeballs," and I quote, "and if you can't see it, you're a fool. I've been holding my breath and waiting for a decade now. It hasn't seemed to happen yet." Yeah? Eureka is drowning. If Seattle is dying, Eureka is drowning, and you've got to come up. When I hear those problems are everywhere, yes. Eureka is not unique for those problems, yes. But how about unique solutions from our elected representatives versus being scoffed at, being sued, being belittled, called a hate monger on public television? Oh, I saw you on public television a couple days ago too, yeah, talking about your stalker. My lawyer loved that, by the way. So, you've got to come up with solutions, or we're going to vote you out of office. And don't you think you're going to do a better job on a county level? You ruined this city authority. I have no idea how you can have the tubers and chutzpah to run for Board of Supervisor. Unbelievable clowns.
Thanks, Cornelius.
Good evening. Good evening. To paraphrase Oscar Wilde, "By giving us the opinions of the uneducated, you keep us in touch with the ignorance of the community. Never has our future been more unpredictable. Never have we depended so much on political forces that cannot be trusted to follow the rules of common sense and self-interest. Forces that look like sheer insanity if judged by standards of other centuries." That's Hannah Antert, the origins of totalitarianism. Easily distracted by wild, wall, lame stream media coverage of the latest crisis and conveniently diverted by news cycles that change every few days, Americans remain oblivious to the many corporation abuses that are still wreaking havoc on our freedoms. Military industrial complexes, costly wars, poor barrel spending, pre-crime laws, civil asset forfeiture, courts that march in lockstep with the local police state, schools that function as indoctrination centers, and bureaucrats that keep in the deep state in power in exchange for paycheck and pension. While you may hear plenty about the dangers posed by Russia, 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 and the blue unicorn disease, in Biden's State of the Union address, it's still the U.S. Inc. that poses the greatest threat to our freedoms and way of life. Americans no longer have any say about what children, their children are exposed to in school. Incredibly, California Inc. continues to insist that parents essentially forfeit their rights when they send their children to the public fool system. This growing tension over whether young people, especially those in the public schools, are essentially wards of the state to do with as corporation officials deemed appropriate in defiance of the children's unconstitutional rights and those of their parents is at the heart of almost every debate over educational programming, school discipline, and the extent to which parents have any say over their children's well-being in and out of school. Americans are little more than pocketbooks to the police state. If there's any absolute maxim by which Earth Inc. seems to operate, it is that we, the people, always get ripped off. This is true whether you're talking about taxpayers being forced to fund high-priced weaponry that will be used against us, endless wars that do little for our safety or our freedoms, or bloated corporate agencies with their secret budgets, COVID agendas, and clandestine activities. Americans no longer have a representative government. We have moved beyond the era of representative government and entered the age of authoritarianism, where all people are suspects, security trumps freedom, and the oathless, bondless officials masquerading as public servants represent the interests of the corporate power elite. This topsy-turvy travesty of law government has become America's new normal. Every perpetrator of this 24-month global genocide cover-up of the funny money collapse will be brought to lawful justice under common law, law, and accord of public opinion.
Thank you. Come on up, yeah.
It's good to see everybody's faces, most people's. I'd like to start off giving credit where it's due. Last time I was here, there was a big presentation about a lot of projects going on around here, and I thought there was a lot of positive things on there. I'm excited to see the playgrounds get improved, see our infrastructure get improved, things like that. And there's a caveat that I noticed is, you know, a lot of people were kind of patent, patent, what was it, measure S or H? S is the weed thing, H?
O-S.
H? Whatever. Anyways, the taxes, you know, anyways, I saw the graph on the, on the PowerPoint where, like, 80% of it was funded by PG&E, so I'd like to thank them too for improving things. And so, I want to get the positive point out of the way first. And second of all, I'll start with how my morning went. I leave for work early, usually 6:00, 6:30 in the morning. I usually don't get home till 4:30 or 5:00. This morning, I'm going to work, and I had some crazy drug, mentally ill, druggie, I don't know, in my driveway. I checked to see if she's okay. I'm polite, but she won't leave. Instead of tying up Eureka's resources, I deal with her myself. I'm late to work. I know they're, you know, hats off to EPD here. You know, I know they got their hands full. I call them when I need them. But we do, we do have problems here that we need to address, and I think it's a valid point that somebody said a few minutes ago that we should be able to find unique solutions, you know? When I moved here over a decade ago, this community wasn't so divided, and this community wasn't so bad. And what really unified the community was this sense of belonging and friendship and love. And that's gone. It's gone. It's so divided now, I mean, everybody's in a different camp. How do you bring people together again? I'm not going to forget the people who caused certain friends of mine to lose jobs over mandates that now don't seem to matter, or certain hostilities where they want to jab my kid when she doesn't need to jab, or things like that. We, we need to avoid that kind of rhetoric moving forward. We should learn a lesson of what we just dealt with for the past couple years, because we truly were one community not that long ago. And I think a lot of people forgot that, you know? And there's a lot of grievances that are valid. And I know you guys can't do everything, you guys don't have the silver bullet, but you guys are leaders, and we do look up to you guys for answers. And I know you guys probably don't always have them, but when you vilify the people with the concerns, it creates division that we don't need. You know, I do appreciate everything that people do, and what's not getting done is probably in our face more than in its shares, and that's why you hear our grievances so loudly and persistently, is some of us do deal with it more than others. And we don't have the answers either. We might, you know, but it's hard to get, sit down and get it on in three minutes, you know? And it's not that we're coming from a divisive stance. We're trying to unify with making this place better. And I think that people lost their way in having compassion for each other when we're the ones grieving for a solution here. Thank you.
Thank you. You can always email us too if you have more that you want us to say that's longer than three minutes. We'd be happy to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public comment?
I know you all are probably happy as all get out to see, actually, my whole smiling face. I wanted to publicly thank you, Ms. Burzle, for removing your mask along with me last time. I don't know if it was a Freudian slip or an intentional show of solidarity, but either way, I appreciated it. I wanted to publicly thank you for your very public show of support. Beyond that, now that we have the mask mandates lifted, I spent three days in the hospital last week, and I was treated like a leper because I tested positive for COVID. And even though they all agreed that it was because I'd had COVID three weeks ago, and I showed no symptoms, and I got no treatment, I was still put in isolation, and everybody had to come in with a full space suit on and the whole works. My doctor, triple vaxxed, masked, face masked, gowned and gloved, and I had a long conversation with him. Matter of fact, I told him that I would publicly commend him for, we had a half-hour conversation and several others without it evolving into ransom and politics and everything else. And I don't think I changed his mind. I don't think he changed my mind. But, but the very fact that we were able to have a conversation about it without ransom, I appreciated that quite a bit, so hats off to Dr. Lewis. That being said, the fact that he was triple vaxxed, masked, gowned, the whole works and everything, and he still stated that he was worried about catching COVID and taking it home to his triple vaxxed parents and harming them, tells me that he neither believes in the, in the effectiveness of the mask or the vax. So, I think the next step, now that the mask mandate's been lifted, is to step up and get rid of the vax mandate too. It was never justified. It's time to get rid of it. Beyond that, let's move on to this dirt, I mean, earth project. There were some things brought up last time. The general feeling that I got from the supporters of that project was that parking doesn't matter.
Yeah, we have that actually on the agenda, and you're welcome to speak on that when we, when we have it during.
Okay, well, I could go on about COVID if you want.
Whatever you'd like to talk about, you've got three minutes.
I'll wait for them then.
Thank you. I see A. Christensen, would you like to speak on Zoom?
Yes, thank you. So, I will be commenting on Earth later, but I do, once again, just want to urge you to do everything you can to restore pre-pandemic transit schedules for City of Eureka buses and Humboldt Transit Authority buses so that I can get to and from work on time. That's all I've got for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands, do you? Brian, do you see any other hands? On Zoom? On Zoom? Oh. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Great. So, if there's nothing further, we'll close the public comment. And we will move on to... Sorry, I just, I haven't been up here in a while, so I'm... We're going to move on to E. Yes, so we're going to move on to public hearings. And we have a report from Kristen, our principal planner gets.
So, good evening, Mayor Pertem and council. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. The item before you this evening is a resolution to allow development on parking lots that were purchased with parking assessment and surplus parking revenue funds. The Parking Assessment District, or PAD, was created in 1954 and generally covers an area from First to Eighth Streets and A to J Streets. Between 1955 and 1964, the city council approved the issuance of a bond for the acquisition and construction of off-street parking facilities and began to acquire and develop parking lots. After several lots were constructed with bond funds, the city was then able to purchase more lots on a pay-as-you-go basis from surplus parking revenues. After eight total parking lots were developed, the bonds were retired. This evening, we're talking about the lots located near the north side of Eureka on Third Street between G and H Streets. The site is the proposed location of the Earth Center project, which would contain at least 31 dwelling units with 27 very low and low-income units and four moderate-income units, along with an intermodal transit center. Although the PAD is no longer collecting assessments, any public parking lot purchased with funds from the PAD must go through a public hearing process prior to allowing a developer to reduce or remove the public parking. Staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to authorize the use of the parking lots for development, in this case for the Earth Center project. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do have a suggested motion when you are ready.
Thank you. And do we have any, isn't that crazy what's going on up there? Can you see that Zoom up there? It's interesting. It's like an art piece. Are there any questions from council at this time? No? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council regarding this item? Come on up.
Hi there. I really wish I didn't have to be here. I've got a lot to do. I own a business directly across from what will be named the Earth Center. We cater to public from, all the way down from Soham to Crescent City. Most of them drive. Many of them are elderly. Where are they going to park? How are they going to get there? And why, why do we have to have all this low-income housing? Is that really going to help the city? I mean, I'm a part of the city too, not just the low-income people. I appreciate that. But do I really want them all in Old Town? Is this going to help the city? Is this going to help Old Town? I don't think so. Or I'd like to be convinced of that, because maybe it will. But I, I was pretty upset about the fact that we got notice of this event, of this proposal a week before. I didn't even go to the meeting because I figured these things take years. Oh, no. I heard 300 people came. Most of them were opposed to it, and it was voted unanimously in. I don't get it. Where's the feedback from the community? You serve us, not just a few low-income people. I mean, what's the purpose of this, really? What is the real purpose of this? Is this to help the city? I want to know how it's going to help the entire city and resurrect Old Town rather than create more issues. We don't need more issues. The biggest issue we have is parking, the lack of parking, and secondly, the homelessness. And they're intertwined, because if I have an older person that's coming to see me, she's not going to walk three blocks away because she's afraid of the homeless, or maybe she can't even make it. So, what's the solution for us in this situation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Few issues with the Earth Center. One, it's touted as a low-income development that's going to provide all of this low-income housing at a cost of $680,000 a unit. I can think of two empty apartment buildings, one in Ninth and H, and one across from the shanty, that between the two of them, there are far more than 31 units. If you gave those landlords $680,000 per unit, they could fix those places up with stained glass windows, gold-plated bidets. I mean, there's absolutely no justification whatsoever for spending $680,000 per unit on 31 low and mid-income housing apartments. Kind of makes me wonder where all that extra money's going to go. Second thing, I liked how at the special meeting, they went on and on about all of the work they had put into designing a building that would tie in with the city, with the neoclassical arches and everything, and they kept showing a picture of it in Old City Hall. But when I first saw the picture of the development, I thought that it was something about renovating the Boone Building, because they didn't spend a lot of time and energy on architecture and design. They walked a block down the street and took a picture of the Boone Building. That thing's, it's almost identical. I mean, it's the same thing. But the thing about it is, that's the perspective plans. You know darn well by the time it's built, it's going to be a slab-sided building with some flush-mounted arched windows and call it neoclassical. It's not going to look like what you're proposing it to look like at all. The third thing is the parking. I worked in that area quite a bit. Worked up on the roof of the building across the street quite a bit. Every time I looked down at that parking lot, it's jam packed full. When I was working down there, I always had to circle the block several times and steal somebody else's parking space to be able to find a place for myself. Doing work on the building. I can't imagine what it would be like thinking that you're gonna go down there and shop at one of the stores. And have to circle the block endlessly to, uh, to find, you know, to, to, to find a place to park. To walk into tail waggers and buy some pants or something. It's just ludicrous. Everybody was talking about, oh, a shuttle service to the gravel lots down there by the boardwalk. That's not gonna work at all. Not only are you taking seventy-five spots out of that lot, you're gonna be requiring another seventy-five for the development itself, which, which puts you at a hundred and fifty spot deficit. In that area. It's not going to work.
Thank you.
Hello, Sebastian with Humboldt Bay Provisions, business owner in Old Town Eureka. I would suggest that when the council takes this under consideration for the resolution, that they don't use the wording of reduce or get rid of parking spaces in the parking district. Cause there has to be some mediation for that part. So that would be my input on that, because as the previous gentleman just said. You know, in peak season. It's really hard for a lot of people to park and we really gotta take advantage of that, so. The thing to think about in my perspective would be. You know, if occupancy rates for the businesses and stuff are high and everybody's there at the same time, you definitely need a lot more parking than what's currently available. Because we all want to have our seats full and our, you know, businesses and people able to come and go as they, as they're able. So that would be something to consider as far as making sure that there's ample parking for overload times. Cause that's when everybody can really take advantage of having those customers come and go and that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Megan Kramer. I'm a real estate agent with Coldwell Banker Cut and Realty. In concept, I am very supportive of the proposed project for a variety of reasons. Our housing situation in Humboldt County has become dire. Done properly, this type of project would help in addressing the issue. My concern, however, is the location from the standpoint of congestion in this specific area. That will only negatively affect quality of life, but will create a dangerous and unhealthy environment. There are variable alternative locations and it would be important to understand how the selection of this site was determined against the alternatives. As proposed, this project would significantly increase traffic congestion and create unacceptable challenges for parking. In the case of parking, we should accept, expect a significant conflict to arise with private property owners as tenants of the proposed project and existing users of the public parking lot that will be removed and, and will trespass on private property to find a place to park. We should assume private owners will act and to protect their rights. In closing, there are alternative surplus sites that would be more suitable to the proposed project. I respectfully ask for you to select an alternative location and to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Kelly Martin, and I just got something I wanted to read off real quick. The designation of surplus property is not in accord with the government code. There is no housing for Eureka residents. There is no all-day parking for employees, businesses, or residents in this area of Old Town. Government code specifies that there must be eighty percent housing, half of that affordable. This is an ATA hub with other businesses and some housing. Number two, none of the housing is for Eureka residents. It's for Humboldt State students. Humboldt State is currently expanding for students over three thousand units. And the other is for traveling nurses for the medical facility that's gonna be housed there, corporate rentals. As of three, prior to COVID, this was one hundred percent full, all day long. There is nothing to replace it all. In this area of Old Town. The lot was created in the late. According to your planner says nineteen fifty-four. I'm sure it was somewhere in that area. Because two-hour parking didn't work for businesses and businesses paid for all that all-day meters. And removal of the two-hour meters throughout Old Town. The business cannot come back and reopen from COVID if there is nowhere for the employees to park. Where can businesses park if this is removed? I'd like to use, show us that. The city is violating the MOU with Eureka Main Street. You promised last July to advocate for the Eureka Main Street regarding parking. Now you're throwing the business under the bus and the Euricans who need housing under, under the bus for HTA. Humboldt State and traveling nurses. I have some other concerns, if I have time. Is the, is the timeline that we, we were informed about this. I, I was informed about an hour before the last meeting. Also, I'm concerned about the crime, the bus stations and businesses. I have the busing concerns and traffic concerns from the buses. I am concerned about the parking study. That, um, how it was done last time. I know you just had one today on Zoom. I didn't know about it until after it was over. But parking study with Arch Alive Friday night. The Friday night markets and the concerts. Cause when I go down there to Old Town, I can't find a place to park when any of that is going on. And I have a, actually have a parking spot down there, but it's always taken. Even the private parking lots are completely full. I'm also concerned about the homeless impact on the businesses. The medical zoning impact. That, uh, I know it wasn't medical zoning originally, maybe now, but medical zoning was always out by the Saint Joe Hospital. One more thing, I know I ran out of time, but there is a lot down on Fourth Street by the Co-op. That's about the same size and it's been for sale for a couple of years. I think that would be a great site for this busing station. And, um, I talked to the actual agent today and it's still for sale. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kelly. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, let's look to Zoom. Oh, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Robert Jones. I own a mixed-use building in Old Town, right on the gazebo. I've owned it for a little over thirty years. I also served on the Eureka Parking Commission for a number of years before it was dissolved. I don't really hold any objections to the city moving forward with whatever improvements. It sounds to me like maybe they're worthwhile improvements. But as I stated in an email that I sent yesterday to, I don't know if you guys received it or not. But I sent it to the people that I was, uh, the notification I got in the mail suggested two destinations to which I sent it. So anyway, I don't know if you got it or not, but my simple inquiry was, based on my understanding of development in Eureka and Old Town. That developments require a certain level of designated parking for their developments. And these developments seem to not only remove existing parking. But don't provide for any of their own and they're increasing the impact on the parking situation. Which granted, you go to Old Town today, maybe parking seems like no big deal. But you're talking about adding multiple residential and commercial units and taking away not only existing parking, but not providing for the addition. So my question to my email, which I pose again is, am I missing something? Can you help me understand? What, what am I missing? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else in the audience, we'll go over to Zoom and looks like Thomas Wheeler.
Hi, City Council.
Welcome.
Thank you for supporting the Earth Center. I'm very excited about this. I think this is gonna be very good for the city of Eureka. It's gonna provide low income housing for people in our community. It will provide housing for traveling medical professionals. It will provide student housing. I think that is really gonna be wonderful for Old Town. It's gonna give us a, a shot in the arm of youthful energy. And the Earth Center is gonna allow Eureka to finally have a good transit center. This transit center is gonna benefit the whole of the city, but in particular, it's gonna benefit our Old Town downtown core. So I, I think that this is in our best interest. This is our public land and we should put it to the best public use. And I believe that the Earth Center is that best use. So thank you for supporting this plan. And I urge you to continue to, uh, to support it.
Thank you, Thomas. And we have A. Christensen.
All right, hello again. So I just want to state that I am fully in support of this project. I went through Old Town yesterday and, you know, I go through there on weekdays. Yesterday, that parking lot was almost completely empty. The only thing that I noticed is that homeless people do like to hang out in empty parking lots. And I totally understand everyone's concerns about crime. Being around the transit center, you know, we all know about the problems in Arcata, but that's not because it's a transit center, it's because of the placement of it. I would like to suggest that Eureka Police, especially the CSET team. Take out some office space in the development so that they are always there. You know, I think that would be a good use for the space and it would be good to have them there. It would be a better space than the old hot dog stand by the Clark Museum that they currently occupy. So I think that would be a good way to prevent that from becoming a problem. As far as parking, I'm hearing these concerns about where are our employees for whatever going to park? Well, you could hire the people who live in that building and then there would be no concerns about parking. You know, members of the workforce who live in that building because they are workforce apartments. You know, if they're not working in Old Town, then they're going to be going somewhere else for work or for school during the day. So that's not going to affect the parking. You know, as far as it benefiting Eureka residents, Eureka residents go to college here. College students living in this building means they're not living in the other housing in the city. And the other thing I'm, you know, I noticed is that most of the restaurants in Old Town. Including Lost Coast Brewery, including, you know, most, most of the restaurants down there at this point. Are closed at least one day a week, if not half the week or more. Because all these people who say they're so concerned about parking in Old Town, don't actually go to Old Town to eat or spend money. You know, putting more people in Old Town as residents mean those people will, will be there to buy their dinner at one of those restaurants, buy their coffee at one of those coffee shops. You know, spend their money and spend their time in those businesses that are having such a hard time attracting customers now. Beyond that, you know, people take the bus, you know, the one business owner mentioned that her clients don't feel comfortable walking past the homeless if they have to park far away. Her clients can take the bus, especially if they're elderly. They may really.
Thank you, A. Your time is over.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you. Colin Fisk.
Good evening, Council members. This is Colin Fisk with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, CRTP. And I just wanted to reiterate our strong support for this project and also our appreciation for the city's decision to specify the low income requirements in the, in the resolution last time. And the city council's unanimous support for further density of residential units on the site. So I hope that we can move forward with that. I also wanted to briefly address the issue of downtown parking, just by saying, you saw in the staff presentation that, uh, you know, the city for many years through the Parking Assessment District devoted a lot of funding and resources to developing downtown parking lots and, you know, prime downtown real estate. And I think it's, it's past time that we devote some resources, some funding to developing a transit center downtown and better residential facilities. You know, we've had, we have plenty of parking and, and we need to give transit a try. So mostly I just want to say that last time, there was a very full discussion. There were a lot of members of the public here. You had a good discussion at council and you made the decision to support the Earth Center. This is really kind of a bureaucratic sort of hoop that you have to jump through tonight and I hope that you will just continue on as planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, there's a phone number. Seven, four, five, four. Looks like the last four numbers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Ken.
Uh, this is Kent Swawatsky. Um, hello, uh, I guess your vice chair, Kim Burgele. I spent my whole time in the supervisor's chamber today, which I guess maybe someday you will be there or one of you will be there. I look forward to opportunity to comment on this particular topic. Some years ago, I did a project right on your gazebo and it was, uh, I think it was what, eight units upstairs and commercial downstairs called the Brothers Building. And in doing that project, I was required to put, I believe, uh, seven thousand five hundred times eight into a parking district fund. And, uh, we were promised at that time that there was gonna be some kind of a parking garage or something built in the area. Or that was a plan or one of the options. And that never did come to fruition. I also managed Ten Linda Williams Jewelry Store down on the corner of Third and E for many years. And, uh, these parking lots, when I go to the supervisor's meetings or go downtown. Were alleged by some study to be only fifty percent full. Well, that is inaccurate. As the prior speakers have said, those parking lots are frequently full to the brim. I know Colin Fisk spoke a little earlier here. And, you know, I do support transit, but you know, if we're gonna convert away from, uh, automobiles and go to other things such as transit, you have to develop the transit first. And unfortunately, compared to Mexico, a third world country, your transit system is, is near nonexistent. Little town I'm in down there, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, every hour, a bus goes through town and picks people up to go around. You don't have those services here. If you have them, you really can't consider getting rid of the parking. As other people have said. You're, uh, people come from out of town and, uh, and parking is a key thing. And I, I noticed that at, at Ten Linda Williams, when I managed that store. When the weather was bad or the parking was totally full, our business was diminished greatly. They'd go down to the mall, you know, they wouldn't go to Old Town. And so I strongly suggest that you possibly reconsider your thought. And if you're considering getting rid of more parking lots. This should be the last one you get rid of. Uh, there's one down behind a motel I looked at buying downtown. Down there. And that particular parking lot was half empty. But the ones that you are, are vacating at this point in time are not in that shape. And I hate to see you cause problems for the businesses down there and cause problems. And it's a health and safety issue when people can't safely park and get to their residence. Uh, I think you're making a mistake, but, um, that's just my crystal ball. So thank you for the opportunity to speak in your forum. And, uh, I hope you will possibly reconsider this and not get rid of any more parking lots till you really have an actual study that's accurate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. I don't see any other hands up, but I just saw Mr. Fullerton come on board. Did you want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So I own a business in Old Town and in fact, it's across the street from the proposed site of the Earth Center. And I don't have any objection to the Earth Center itself. It sounds like a good project. It's, you just picked. It sounds like a good project. It's, you just picked the wrong location. That lot has 76 parking spaces. And despite what you've been told, it usually has 30 to 40 cars parked in it. And that's after the Lost Coast Brewery has been closed for lunch. Pre-pandemic, that parking lot was, uh, at least 50 or 60 cars. Now, I looked at this street, um, on my block and there's about, in the middle of the afternoon, there was about maybe eight, maybe 10 parking spots on the street. And the block next to me, there might be another five. But where are those 40 cars that are parked in the parking lot now going to go? And if Lost Coast Brewery opens for lunch again, it'll even be worse. And that's not even taken into account the 76 residents that are going to live in that building and where are they going to park their cars? This is a disaster for the businesses in the local area. It will severely impact my business. And a lot of us are really upset about this. And I urge you not to drop the project, just to move it to a different location. That parking lot at Third and, and H and G is vital to the health of the business community around it. So please give it another thought and move that location. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fullerton. I don't see any other hands. If there's anybody on Zoom, if you would go ahead and speak up now. Cause I can't see you. Okay. Well, hearing and seeing no one. No. Hearing and seeing no one, um, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion. Counsel, did, did you? Councilmember Costellano.
Sure. I was scratching my head, but I do have things to say also, so I'll just jump right in. Thank you to everyone who spoke on this, um, the parking and the area and the Earth Center project. I remain quite excited about it and, you know, as someone who works and has had a business in Old Town for quite a while, I, I think it will be a benefit. I do think, and this is just something that, you know, I, I've talked to other people about it. And I mentioned to the city manager Slattery today, but I thought, oh, I'll elevate it to the conversation of council. And that is, um, it is hard sometimes, you know, people who work in Old Town, just the lack of like long-term parking. So I do think we just need to find some strategies to work with that. And I know that the city is working on it. Um, so, you know, for, for folks who did bring that up as a concern, we are looking at some new solutions so that, you know, folks who are, you know, working those six, eight-hour shifts can, can park and, you know, either, you know, do something so that they don't have to worry about, you know, getting a, a big ticket or something like that. You know, and, and again, some of those solutions we talked about last, um, at our last session, including the, um, the electric shuttle and, you know, looking at other parking and better clear, more clearly identifying the parking that we do have, I think are all going to be, um, really good things. And again, um, I know for the, all the places I've worked in Old Town, I think that having college students and, you know, visited traveling healthcare professionals, um, and transit is, is actually going to be a, a great opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for everybody that, uh, spoke today. You know, we appreciate hearing from everybody, obviously, about your concerns. I have a couple of questions, uh, that I heard and, and, well, to discuss. First, there was a, a concern about low-income housing and, and how many low-income units does the city currently have? I mean, I think, I think what people don't understand is that we have housing. Most of it is, you know, market rate. How many low-income units do we have currently?
Oops, Principal Planner Gatz, I'm sorry.
So the number of low-income units that we have in the city, quite frankly, is unknown. We have a number of units that we've identified through various means, but again, there could be low-income units out there that we are just not aware of. So I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer for you on that.
Okay. And second, I, I think there's a, maybe a misconception about the cost of the project that people are equating the units of, of housing and not the businesses that'll, that'll be there and the transit center. Am I wrong to think that the 680,000 per unit isn't, it, it's incorporating the entire project cost? I'm just wondering where that number comes from.
So that is incorporating all of it, but it is expensive. The cost of construction, as anybody will tell you, is very expensive right now. And the discussions that we've had with people in the medical field about what they've been looking at, because this has been a concern for them and finding housing. It's the typical range is between $400,000 and $500,000 a unit. Even ADUs, those type of things are extremely expensive. When you take into consideration the transit center and the commercial space down below, it's close to $500,000, uh, a unit. But that's, um, I want to say it's the going rate, but it's, it, it's expensive right now in order to create these units. What's good though is that this is $30 million that'll be coming into our community.
Well, I think it's important for people to understand, like, it's expensive to build flat out. Any, any, anybody in contracting will tell you that. This isn't an exorbitant rate for, for what we're trying to do, especially in an earthquake-prone area. I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Arroyo.
Great. Well, I was prepared to ask some questions to address questions that came up in the audience and then those individuals, um, left. So I will still ask them, um, in case they watch this later. There was a question about zoning requirements for parking in Old Town or what, um, how much parking is required for developments? And I will say that when we went through and, um, you know, made changes to our general plan that then resulted in, changes to our zoning code, that, um, you know, the resounding feeling from people who participated in those extensive public processes was that people wanted to see Old Town developed to look more like how historic buildings are in Old Town. So again, that's, you know, uh, buildings close to the edge of the sidewalk. You know, large windows and commercial establishments downstairs, housing upstairs. And not a, a priority placed on parking, um, which isn't to say that there would be no parking, but that, that was not the development priority, um, that people wanted to see. And, um, we heard that very loud and clear. So that is what our guidance documents, um, have reflected, is the public input that we got over a period of many, many months. Um, and so now we're seeing what that looks like on the ground, which is, um, you know, conceivably a development that will have, um, no emphasis on parking and an emphasis on other uses. I don't think anyone on the council thinks that parking dynamics in Old Town will not change. I think we all recognize that people's behavior is going to need to change. And there could even be some discomfort associated with what that looks like. And, you know, maybe real frustration from folks who are used to parking in that lot, used to going there. And, you know, we also have a pretty significant amount of on-street parking that people are not necessarily considering when talking about this. And I will say that when I look at other communities and the way they've planned parking, the combination of lots that are a few blocks away from key destinations, um, you know, the electric shuttle that we're talking about that will, um, circle Old Town and go between lots and then on-street parking, you know, it seems to work in, large metropolises and smaller kind of coastal cities that I think we're modeling ourselves after. So, um, it's uncomfortable and it's a change. And I realize that, and it doesn't fall in deaf ears, that people are frustrated and feel angry about it. I hear that. And, um, I think we are in a position to, again, bring in this incredible amount of funding into our community and fusion of, uh, you know, millions of dollars into the local economy that has, you know, pays dividends. You know, the, the impact of that is more than just the actual dollar amount that we're going to see, um, for the project. But, you know, um, the impact on the economy is huge. And it's grant money that's on the table that if we don't get it, someone else will. So, you know, the idea that we are, um, laying out, uh, city funds for this to, you know, that would otherwise be going to other uses is, is just not accurate. We're really looking at utilizing grant funds, um, to do something that our community has told us time and time again to prioritize. So this is where the rubber meets the road. We ultimately, um, have to put it somewhere. And we've gone over in past meetings why this location is, um, you know, being so strongly considered. It's large. It's a large contiguous parcel that offers a lot of opportunity, um, for development and design of something that is, I think, pretty innovative and meets a lot of needs, um, and also meets the needs of 60, uh, excuse me, 600,000 transit riders every year. So, um, I always get the zeros wrong, um, because I think, oh, 60,000 sounds right, but the number is actually 600,000. Rides per year. So that is, um, significant, uh, as well. And so I think the impact is really, you know, much greater than the 100 or so folks that will be housed on site. So ultimately, I still stand with the project and I, I'm ready to move forward with this. And I, I hear the, you know, the frustration and I think that we have, um, identified some opportunities to improve signage, improve, um, transportation to and between lots. And, um, you know, some of it is just going to be frankly, a change for Eureka that, um, folks aren't used to. So, um, I think the constellation of all of those things, you know, will ultimately not be, um, you know, will, will, I, I ultimately think this project will bring significant benefits to our community, as many council members have stated. And I, I don't think it can be understated too, that, um, having all of these additional people in Old Town, um, spending money will be, will have a positive impact for many of the businesses in Old Town. And I, um, I continue to take issue with this, um, way that people are characterizing low-income folks in the community. Cause I recently, very recently became not low-income. And, you know, at 38 years old, I can finally be like, phew, I'm out of that bracket. You know, but all of my young life spent here, where I lived, um, or played and recreated and ate and drank and made merry in Old Town. I was a low-income person who spent a ton of my income locally. Um, and I've said this before, but low-income people, um, statistically spend more of their money, uh, locally. So there's also that benefit. So, um, I think, you know, I, I, I really get frustrated to hear any disparaging of, you know, the poor working folks in our community and students in our community who are still like here being a part of the community and any disparaging of transit riders. Frankly, that's, uh, something I can't quite stomach. But I still think, um, you know, this is, uh, like one of the commenters said, a procedural item. But, um, I realize that it has a lot of importance to people. So thank you for coming and speaking about it.
Councilmember Moulton, did you have any comments?
I don't have much to add, except that I would just reiterate that we're talking about bringing customers into Old Town, customers and employees. And, um, there's a lot of ideas being thrown around, but I genuinely believe that this will be ultimately good for the businesses in Old Town that are already there and it's going to fill up those spots that are empty. And this is the, the way forward is not to move backwards. And this is, I believe this is a, a good path forward for Eureka. It's going to be effective. And it's going to, um, do the thing to Old Town that everybody wants, which is less crime, more people, stronger businesses, and a better walkable, uh, more interesting place to live.
Thank you. Um, I too had a couple of things, um, that I heard in public comment that I'd just like some clarification on, or maybe if they could be clarified. One of those things is, you know, oftentimes, similarly to what Councilmember Arroyo was speaking to, um, I think that the idea of low income, people think that that's people that are, you know, living under a bridge or something like that. Could you, could you specify, what is the, um, what is the, uh, money amounts that, uh, put you in that bracket, high and low?
So, I mean, it, it varies and I don't have the exact amount, but the last that I knew. So it's basically you have low income, which is 80% of the median, median income. And then you have very low income, which is, I believe, below 60%. And so on average for a single person, that can be anywhere between 20,000 to, I believe, up to close to 60,000 a year. So a lot of these people are employees, if, you know, they probably even qualify for, the vast majority of the employees that work in Old Town and retail establishments are probably in the very low income range. And a good majority of low income here would be considered to be workforce, um, median income. Cause obviously the higher salaries kind of, you know, make those outliers and make our average a little bit higher. So, I mean, makes it higher than it, you know, you would think for this area. But yeah, it's, it's working class. They need to demonstrate that they have a job and that they are working. And that's how they qualify for the different levels and subsidies for the, um, for the different income levels.
I appreciate that clarification. I would like to say too, that, you know, when we, when we move the lower-income folks up, it opens up housing for people that are, you know, extremely low, the people that people are afraid of. You know, for lack of a better word, so, which is really unfortunate, but that's the truth. Secondly, um, I heard a lot again about parking and I know last meeting, uh, we did talk pretty extensively about it. And, um, I'd brought, well, I think several of us had brought forward this idea of, um, planning the mitigation and bringing something back to council. Can you tell us how that's going? And can you tell us what kinds of things you're working on?
So as one of the speakers, uh, said today, there was the first of, I believe, three stakeholder meetings related to the, um, uh, the parking study that we're doing as a part of the waterfront, um, plan for the city of Eureka. That is looking at not only data from current parking studies, but data from older parking studies, looking at information, um, received from a survey that was, um, out for a month or two. And then developing strategies to try and address some of the concerns that are, uh, here. Because the waterfront, the Eureka Waterfront Plan, the intent of that is to analyze infill development, not only on city-owned property, but private property and what those impacts would be is a way to mitigate them. And one of the components of that is the parking study. And so it will look at alternative methods, whether it's restricted time limit parking, whether it's permit parking, the electronic shuttle, things like that will be, um, looked into. We do know that this project here will have that electric shuttle. And we have used some of the data from previous parking studies to determine what that route would be based on the usage of those parking lots so that they can be, um, accessed by people and be brought into different parts from those locations to other parts of Old Town.
Okay. Yeah, I was more specifically speaking to the, um, the area that we're discussing. So if we're losing 71, we're getting 31 people, uh, what kind of mitigation are we doing? We've got the shuttle that's going to come forward. Um, we have property that we can, uh, parking that we can lease. Is that true? Have you had?
Uh, for businesses, yes. As, um, Special Projects Manager Elsmore said at the previous meeting, yes, we do, um, lease out spaces to businesses for, um, the parking that we do have. And that's still available.
So is there more, more that's going to be coming forward about mitigating for these parking places that have been lost?
Specific to this project, I think that'll come through the development of that. We do have intentions on designated spots, um, in another location for this development. But as it relates to infill in general and some of the concerns about parking, that's what that parking study is for. And that's what is going to be discussed through the stakeholder meetings and the public meetings that are associated with that. The first of, I believe, three and Principal Planner Gatz can correct me, but first of three public meetings, which are above and beyond those parking study meetings for the Eureka Waterfront Plan, is going to be happening on March 10th. And we just sent out notification for that. So there'll be ample opportunity for not only people in the area and business owners in the area to comment on it, but also, um, to provide their input, not only through the Eureka Waterfront Plan, but also through the parking study.
So I too, I support this project. I think it's really exciting for our community. And I've worked in Old Town and I know that parking can be very problematic. So my hope is that we'll continue to look for ways. In Old Town, we have, like I said, we have the shuttle, we have some business parking for lease. Um, and just continuing to work with the business owners to create- the business owners to create a more balanced approach to the, to the parking. So with that, I approve of the project. And I'm going to make a motion that we move, unless there's other comments. Councilmember, uh, Mol, uh, Arroyo? It's my mom, my mom voice there.
Name all the, all the kids and all the pets.
All the kids, yeah.
I just wanted to note one more time, since I'm reiterating a lot of the key points I've made before, that, you know, I really do think, when I was, I was looking again at my, my book that I got when I took my Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design class, the EPD was so kind to put on a few years ago. And I was looking through the principles there. And I was actually thinking about a different project, but, you know, really, really noticing how much emphasis is put on the idea of natural surveillance. So, you know, adding eyes and ears to a community, and also that sense that you're being watched from windows, is a pretty significant crime prevention strategy. And then, you know, having just simply more people in a space. I, I'm not sure I quite understand the rationale for how a development like this would increase crime. Perhaps people are insinuating that it would push crime to other parts of the city out of that parking lot. But I don't see this being a magnet, a, you know, a thriving, vibrant place where students and nurses and doctors and work, workers who work in Old Town are coming and going, seems like it will benefit the crime situation in the adjacent area. So hopefully, we will see that be the case. And I just wanted to kind of bring up that as a, a major reason why I think development like this is, is beneficial. So with that, I, I will move on to be ready to vote.
And I would say, too, I think that change is always, it's always a struggle. And we, you know, unless it's my idea, right? But the point being is that I, I was just remind, reminding myself of when we put Betty's project in with the trailers down at Mercer Fraser, and there was so much public pushback. And that was, it ended up being such a great project that ended up growing and supporting and helping a lot of people. So it's just, you know, we never know where that positivity and where those changes are going to make good changes. And if they don't, then we can always look at that, too. So I move the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the reduction of removal of, or removal of public parking at two public parking lots, at Third and G and Third and H Streets, to facilitate development of affordable housing.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please vote.
How do I vote? I mean, I vote yes. But how do I communicate that?
You just did it. Thank you, Councilmember Molton.
Aye.
Are you wanting a roll call vote, or we just use our buttons?
We have lights that are on.
Great. Use your lights. Did we have a second? I missed, sorry. Councilon, thank you.
Mine's not working either.
Let me try that.
There we go.
Sorry.
And I'm not showing, oh, I'm showing up as Mayor Seaman.
It's okay, I got it.
But it's me.
Thank you.
Okay. So is it a unanimous yes vote? Motion carries?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here. All right. So moving on to our second public hearing, fee schedule update with Director Millar. May we have a report, please?
Good evening. So tonight's public hearing is just a fee schedule update. It is limited to our Community Services Department. Director Donna Wood is on Zoom. So if you have any questions about these fee changes, she is available. And that is all I have for this presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Costellano?
Thanks. I know that most of these fee schedule changes pertain to the zoo, and all of that makes plenty of sense. I, I just want to double check, you know, I, there's the library passes available for people to, you know, enter the zoo free. Will those still be available for folks ongoing? And are they getting well-used? Do people know about them? Do we need to advertise them more?
I think Director Wood can answer. I do know that they're definitely still available. And I do think they get pretty well-used, as well as our discounts that we offer the community. But Director Wood, can you comment on that, please?
Yes, definitely. Good evening, everyone. Our, we have a variety of programs to ensure access to all. The program's called Everyone's Zoo. And it's a program run through the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation. There are a ton of opportunities, and the library passes are one. So if anyone is interested, please check out the Sequoia Park Zoo website. And Everyone's Zoo is the program to learn more about.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I've seen this, and I know it's in the agenda summary. But could you, could you share just the, the thinking behind these changes? Because I know, you know, those at home watching might be curious to understand the fee changes. Could you just kind of share the thinking of the department behind doing these, doing it this way?
Sure. The, the major shift is moving away from a flat scale, one fee for all, to a fee where if you have a smaller event, folks with a smaller event would have a smaller fee, and folks with a larger event would have a larger fee. We just, we used to have a flat scale for a variety of services. And that's moving, moving towards a size-based fee program.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I can't see you, Councilmember Molton. Did you have any questions?
No, no, sorry. Of course, you can't see me. No, I'm, I'm fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Well, seeing, we will open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this item? I don't see any hands on Zoom. Does anybody see any hands on Zoom? No. All right. Seeing no one, we will bring it back to council for a discussion. And about Councilmember Arroyo.
I move that we adopt a resolution of the City, Council of the City of Eureka, establishing various fees and service charges within the city of Eureka.
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, uh, sorry. That was a unanimous vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. You're doing great. I know. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the category are, under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. However, if discussion is required, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Councilmember Bauer?
Like to pull F three.
Item F three. Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember, uh, Arroyo?
Sorry, I don't want to pull anything. I was going to make the motion minus F three.
Thank you. Please do.
All right. I move that we approve the consent calendar without item F three.
I'll second.
And we're voting?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Molton.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Great. So now we're going to be talking about F three. And I'm not sure who has. Is that you?
I, I'm sure that Councilmember Bauer would have more information than this. But this was something that was requested to be put on the agenda. It's related to an initiative related to tax measures and fines, and an initiative that's been put together by a special interest group that could potentially go through legislation. I think Councilmember Bauer has more information.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, this was brought up by Cal Cities, actually, of which we're a member of that organization. And essentially, this would make it nearly impossible for cities to pass tax measures like Measure H, which is paving streets, paving Fourteenth Street, paving an endless amount of, of badly needed, you know, road repairs. So I frankly don't see the utility of this from the Business Roundtable, I believe is a supporter of it, when businesses require good facilities in order to get people to their places of business. So I just think it was important for the public to know about it. That is something that limits a, a local jurisdiction, a local city's ability to do what they want to do within their city. And if that means they're willing to tax themselves in order to improve, you know, their, their community, I just find it stunning. And I, I, I support what Cal Cities, you know, is, is trying to do here, which is, you know, say, let's, let's be against this initiative. Who knows if it'll actually, you know, make it to the ballot. But they're going to throw a bunch of money behind it. So we need to take a stand against it. And I, I hope the public is paying attention and takes a look at it and understands the repercussions for local control. So that said, you know, unless anybody has any, any questions or comments.
Are there any questions from council? So now we'll open this item up for public comment. Is anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of the City Council opposing initiative number twenty-one dash zero zero four two A one.
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to legislative action correspondence. Are there any correspondence items that council would like to add? Yes. Councilmember Molton? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. It's been requested that we take a break. So we're going to take a short break. We'll be back in, what time is it?
It's seven twenty-four.
So we'll be back at seven thirty-ish? Thank you. Let me just see where we're at. Okay. We're ready. My mic was on that whole time. I don't know if our... Yeah, great. Okay, so moving forward to ordinance and resolutions. 21, 22, mid-year budget review. Director Millar?
Good evening. Tonight's item is the fiscal year 21, 22 mid-year review. There are two parts to this presentation.
Is your mic on?
Yes. The first part is kind of a citywide overview of budget trends and adjustments. And then the second section is a general fund analysis, and this includes a inter-fund transfers and debt relief section, a revenues versus expenditures, and then a Measure H Just to go over the budget schedule again, last month, we did a look back at the fiscal year 2021 budget. Tonight is the mid-year. By the end of March, we should have the 22, 23 proposed budget ready. The first budget study session is likely to be at the beginning of April, and then budget adoption should either be the second meeting in April or a meeting in May. Again, tonight, revenues are shown as negative numbers or in parentheses, and then expenses are shown as positive numbers. Okay, so for, for the first section, budget trends and adjustments, we're going to look, look at personnel projections. So overall, our personnel projections should come in just under budget. If you look at some funds, they're seeing more volatility than others in the harbor fund. We are seeing a reduction. This is mainly due to temp salaries that are coming under. Then looking at the building fund, we have a vacant position that will remain vacant for the fiscal year, as well as some underutilized temp salaries. In IT, even though temp salaries are over budget, we have some unfilled vacant positions. And then in facilities, facilities, we just overestimated personnel costs, and they are coming in under. So overall, and we typically see about a 2% to 4% margin of error when it comes to personnel projections, so this is fairly typical. The next area that's seeing some large changes are capital projects. The first item was a large project called Energy Storage Systems. This was a $7 million project. We thought that this project would be run through the city of Eureka. It's actually going, or administered by another agency. This is the Tesla projects, such as those batteries outside. And then looking at water and wastewater, typically in these capital project funds, we do come under budget. This is either due to things being pushed out into the future, or just not having enough staff to proceed with all the budgets, or all the items in the budget. And then cost allocation. So for the fiscal year 2021 budget, I reduced the cost allocation overall as a way to keep us from cutting even deeper. Unfortunately, during that fiscal year, some of these cost centers went over budget. The combination of that effect left me with some prior year overages. And then in the current year, we are seeing some costs exceed what we originally estimated. These are some one-time increases. These should cover some deficits in these funds. And then moving on to a general fund analysis. So to begin, we're going to look at inter-fund transfers. Inter-fund transfers are when cash is moved between funds. So a transfer to means that money is going out. This is essentially an expense, whereas a transfer from is money coming in from another fund. So in the general fund, we're looking at a fairly large amendment that is focused on a handful of items. I will start with the airport fund. So a few years ago, we upgraded the septic system at the airport. This left a large hole. So what is happening here is the general fund is going to fill that hole, but because the airport has an enterprise activity, that will be paid back over the course of seven to 10 years. And then street projects. So last year, we received some money from PG&E because they had ripped up 14th Street. Instead of them doing the street work, they gave us a check that went into the general fund, and now I'm transferring that money over to the Streets Fund or the Gas Tax Fund. So we've had some deficits that have grown over, over, you know, going back right here is nine years. The major deficits have been in the Building and Abatement Fund. It's been hard to keep our permit fees high enough to cover costs. And then in the Abatement Fund, we've had some expensive legal endeavors that are going after problem properties. And then in the harbor, the harbor has just, for years and years, struggled to balance the budget. I do think this is because, you know, going back a decade or more, fun, or expenses were transferred out of the general fund to relieve the general fund and put into this fund. So, you know, as of last fiscal year, we were looking at a negative cash deficit among all these funds of upwards of about $7 million. But fortunately, we are doing so well in the general fund that I am proposing that we eliminate these debts with the hope that they will not come back. We are, in a future meeting, I will propose a inter-fund transfer policy that will force us to recognize these debts every fiscal year and to address them in the current fiscal year. So those transfers to, you know, Building, Abatement, Harbor, Parking in the Airport, we're looking at upwards of 5.8 million. This will cover all but about 1.5 million. This deficit will be in the Harbor Fund. The reason I'm leaving that deficit in the Harbor Fund is because we're under a development agreement to do development on the waterfront. That should result in a large payoff in future years that will cover that remaining deficit. So with that amendment, you can see that we, you know, will quickly eliminate these negative cash balances that have been almost impossible to address with, in prior year So next, we're going to look at revenues and expenditures. So in the general fund, the, the original budget forecasted about 38 million in revenues. Today, we're looking at just under $42 million in revenues. One of the reasons is that our sales tax projections have increased. In addition to that, I've increased our TOT or Transit Occupancy Tax estimate. In fiscal year 1920, that, the TOT dropped down to about 2.2 million. So when it came to the 21, 22 fiscal year, I budgeted about 2.5 million for TOT. But based on the final 20, 21 numbers, I'm comfortable putting that number up to 3.2 million. Going down to charges for services, that category is seeing a very large increase, and this is due to the zoo admission revenue. In fiscal year 2021, zoo revenue exceeded half a million dollars, which was a record. Today, we're just under a million dollars. So I've increased that line item by about 750,000. And then I've also increased revenue at the gift store. Today, it's at about 180,000. I'm expecting that to come in at over 300,000. Then looking at the expenditure side, so the beginning of the fiscal year, I estimated about 35 million. Today, that number has increased to about 41.3, mainly due to those inter-fund transfers. Salaries and benefits, I'm assuming those will be under. We'll see some salary savings. This category, materials and services, that has increased due to those one-time cost allocation increases. And then transfers is what we just went over. So looking at our revenues versus expenditures before the transfers, so the original budget forecasted a surplus of about 3.1 million or 3.2 million. Before those transfers are applied, the surplus would be over 6.6 million or closer to 6.7 million, which is, I can safely say that is a record surplus, or would be a record surplus. But, you know, I think it's important that we take care of those deficits and we utilize that large surplus. And even with that inter-fund transfer, we would still have a half a million dollar surplus at the end of the fiscal year. Next, we're going to talk about Measure H. So just to review what Measure H is and what it replaced, Measure H is a 1.25% sales tax. It replaced Measure Q, that was a half cent sales tax. If Measure Q was still in place today, it would generate just under 5.2 million dollars. Measure Q, or Measure H is looking at about 12.9 million, so an increase of about 7.7 from Measure H. On the uses, so the uses have these different categories in these different departments. Some of these increases were identified in strategic visioning. That includes the Cape Division that was moved into the general fund and allocated monies. And then our parks operation, we greatly increased the budget for parks to improve the look of Old Town and, you know, parks citywide. When you're looking at the Department Public Works and those divisions of traffic, streets, and stormwater, those are under the category of infrastructure. That's because those increases or those items used to be in the gas tax fund. So I was able to move operational expenses into the general fund and open or use the gas tax fund entirely for projects. So we get money from the state for highway users' tax in the RMRA. So those monies from the state are being utilized purely for capital projects as well as money for Measure H. You can see that in non-departmental transfers. And then we also use Measure H for fund support. You know, in the Building Fund and in the Harbor Fund, we were able to move costs out of those funds into the general fund to help stabilize those funds. And then we also are anticipating about a 2.8 million dollar surplus from our Measure H monies. So these are slides from my 21, 22 budget presentation. It shows what we initially estimated the Measure H uses, or what the Measure H uses would be. So I've created this schedule to compare those to what we're seeing today. On the left were my original estimates, and then in the middle is what my current estimate is. You can see some of the differences, or some of the current estimates are less, and that's mainly because I'm seeing salary savings. So what I was previously going to cover in the gas tax fund is actually less because salary savings are coming in and personnel costs are less. And then the category that's, that has grown is the budget surplus by about 680,000. So overall, our uses of Measure H have remained the same as originally budgeted for. I do have a correction on my agenda or on my attachments, that transfer account. I uploaded an old schedule. It showed about 5.7 being transferred. The true number is about 6.1, so I asked for this to be corrected upon adopting the But that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Millar. Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Costellano?
These are kind of small questions, but I noticed that there's a domestic violence lodging program, which I had never heard about before. I know this wasn't in your, like, big budget overview, but is that a new program or is that?
Is that a line item?
It's a line item. Sorry. It's on the first page of the line items. It's under police.
I'm, I'm not going to try to answer.
Okay.
I can get back to you, but I-
I was wondering about it.
Yeah, we'll research that and get back to council about it.
Thanks. And then, this is probably more of like the scale of question that would be your realm of expertise. In terms of the, I mean, I'm excited to see just more stability in general within city funding and, you know, addressing some of these kind of historic challenging areas. Can you speak to, you know, just the, with, I guess specifically with abatement funds, how this stability may kind of help address problem properties and things like that?
In the sense that by clearing up these efforts on previous property owners, we should have more resources to go after new problem properties. You know, we kind of have, had to pull back because, you know, these legal costs have added up, and we didn't really have a means to cover what we were already doing. But now by satisfying those debts, we should have some additional resources to make additional efforts to address other properties.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Thank you for the presentation. It's a nice moment to reflect on the fact that we get to talk about a surplus and not talk about a deficit. So that's great overall. And I was curious what your thoughts are on the benefits of paying down the, you know, funds that you talked about tonight in lieu of other costs like our PERS liability, that kind of thing. What, is there a different characteristic to that kind of debt? I mean, I know you just spoke to, to part of it, but yeah, why, why focus those resources there?
And why not PERS? Because we are, we've started going down a road to address the PERS debt in a separate manner with the pension bonds. That's still a very good strategy. That doesn't mean that, you know, if we, we should have large surpluses next fiscal year and probably for the next at least three to five years, not longer, we will have the option of setting aside some of those surpluses and using that, those monies to pay down the bond debt. You know, if there's, you know, if we don't go and issue bonds, we could always use those surpluses to pay the debt down directly from PERS. I do think it's, you know, the, these other deficits won't go away. There's no, I, I don't know where we would find the money to pay down these other debts, whereas the pension debt has a strategy or there's multiple strategies there, whereas we just got to cover, you know, we had bad fiscal discipline, and here's a way to just kind of rid ourselves of that debt and have a clean slate, so.
Thank you. May I ask one more? And I'm, so I'm curious, you did say that there's- And I'm, so I'm curious, you, you did say that there's often kind of a variance around 2% around, um, the, um, uh, excuse me, salary or staffing costs? Is, but are we seeing kind of some savings there because it's a little bit hard to recruit or hire people right now? Is that something that we're seeing as a city overall?
Yeah, typically when we're coming under in personnel costs, it's due to vacancies. And right now, you're, you are absolutely seeing that. Typically, it's been in the Police Department, but now it's kinda across the board. Um, so, you know, I, I'm being somewhat conservative in my numbers. I expect more salary savings by the, the end of the year.
Thank you. I know a lot of people have talked about the great resignation that's been happening. So I'm assuming we're not immune from that, but yeah.
Yeah, my department has, um, faced that as well, so, uh, that's, it's been a first for my department, at least.
Well, I appreciate the approach to, um, improving our fiscal solvency while we have those salary savings, I guess. It's like, we don't necessarily want those salary savings. We'd love to have, um, a full staff of great employees, but, um, but yeah, seems like a good way to use those funds. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer.
It's great news. I love to see us paying down debt. Um, that's always something I strive to do. Um, and yeah, I appreciate the presentation. It's nice to see a, a fiscally sound city, you know, it's great. Um, I do have a question. I mean, we hear a lot of talk about, you know, business, you know, issue. Obviously, we've had tough couple of years, but the revenue seems to show that, you know, we're doing alright, that, that we have tourism. I mean, is there any validity that, to the, what we hear constantly about, you know, tourism suffering? It, it just doesn't seem like the numbers are showing that.
Yeah, then, in the tourism category, uh, it would be a hard argument to say that it's not doing well because with TOT, I mean, clearly, you know, people are coming in and filling up hotel rooms. Uh, you know, so that customer is very likely going to be a tourist versus, you know, um, our sales tax numbers, which have seen this, you know, kinda unprecedented growth. And that's really because the consumer has changed their spending habits. Uh, because of the pandemic, uh, people stopped spending a lot of their, uh, disposable income on services because you couldn't go out and, you know, see people face to face. So, um, people started spending their money on tangible items. Uh, this is why we see supply chain issues today. Um, I expect a correction in the future. I think we will go back to how we were before. But in the meantime, you know, that's, uh, we've benefited because sales tax is applied to tangible items for the most part. So I do expect our numbers to, or the growth to kinda come down a bit and, um, but that's not to say that, you know, some of our sales tax increases is due to people coming into town from the outside. And I think we did see that in the first summer of the pandemic.
No, that, that makes sense. Thank you for that. Um, I don't know if we wanna get Katie back up, just to...
Councilmember Moulton, did you have any questions?
I think you know, as a thorough report, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm, will pipe up if I need anything.
Thank you. We couldn't see your face, we were looking at the, uh, motion. Um, so I just wanted to thank you for that report. Um, it was most excellent to hear that we're doing so much better, you know? Uh, when we first got on council, we were cutting the budget straight across 10%, so it's, it's a big change. Big changes happening, which is really positive. I was curious too, a little bit more about the PERS. I understand the bonds, but I'm wondering if we can, um, add money to that, or is it more, I guess the question would be, is it, is it more beneficial, it's more beneficial to spend the money locally with our, like, maybe recruiting and some of these other things and pay off the funds than it would be to attack that animal, uh, farther than the, uh, than the bonds? Is that what I kinda heard you say?
I think if we don't take the opportunity to pay these debts off, we might find ourselves in a position where we don't have the means to do that. I think that's what happened for going back a decade was the General Fund was, uh, just didn't have any extra. We were constantly cutting every couple of years and we were leaving these things aside, or these issues aside. And now that we have this huge surplus, I just, um, yeah, that's where I think it, I think that's our best strategy is to continue with the, the bonds, um, and yield the savings from the reduced interest rate. And then to take that savings and put it into a special trust fund, uh, to do that at the same time as paying, using this, this one-time surplus to pay off these debts.
Great. Thank you. And I'd like to thank all the voters of Measure H. If you've been driving around town, so much work is happening. I know it's annoying, can't get from point A to point B, but, uh, it's most excellent. I'm sorry, county, uh, city manager.
Yeah, excuse me. I was just gonna say, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Millar, but I also think it's beneficial because some of these debts that we've had in these other funds have been, um, nixed on our financial audits. And I think by paying these off, it'll help us with our financial rating and, and going forward as well.
Yeah, they have been, uh, issues with the auditors. Um, they've been concerned because there was no plan to address these debts. Uh, and to just give you some comparison, our pension debt is over 50 million dollars, whereas this is 7 million dollars. So I'm gonna need a multi-year strategy to address the pension side, uh, whereas I can take care of these debts and make the auditors happy. Yeah, so I, you know, we, we will have surpluses in the future if we want to make additional pension debt payments.
So the idea of a clean slate is a wonderful thing.
Yes.
Councilmember Bauer, did you want to, um, make the motion? Didn't you have your hand up?
Nope.
Can I just make one more note? So I didn't, uh, talk about this in the presentation, but we are adding a position in the City Manager's Office. Uh, that is the only major personnel change. So I just wanna, uh, make sure everyone understands that piece.
Great. And I don't, didn't ask for public comment, did I? Nope. Okay, so let's, um, open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that's still here that would like to comment? Hearing no one. We'll bring it back to council for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Bauer. Oh, is there somebody else's hand? No. Okay.
Well, it was up on the screen. I don't have it. No, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council amending the fiscal year 21, 22 budget.
I'll second. And I do have a comment or a question actually that I forgot to ask, wrote it down, but then didn't ask it. Um, so from, from what I saw, I think we're going into the next fiscal year with a, a remaining surplus.
Oh, yeah.
After, after paying down that, um, those debts that we discussed. So, um, and I know that there was a whole lot of stuff, uh, this is kind of a nitpicky question. So, okay, so first of all, I just wanted to confirm, yes, we are going in with a surplus, which is great. Um, and then I know there's a whole category of stuff that is strategic visioning related. The council was like, this is what we wanna see, and we want a unicorn. Um, but anyway, staff did a great job im- implementing that stuff, and I don't mean to make light of it because it was all really important for the community. But one of the things, um, that people keep bringing up to us, and I wanted to see where this stands, was this, um, ongoing cleanup of Old Town. You mentioned it in your presentation and, you know, kind of Parks Funds, but also Old Town. Um, can, can we apply some of that surplus to that since it was such a priority? Or where does, where are we going with that?
You're, you're going directly to my city manager report, so I'll, I'll give an update on it. There has been, I, I will talk about the, um, issues that we're having that Director Millar referred to. We have hired, um, we've been through three recruitment processes since strategic visioning for Parks Maintenance Workers. We have hired four different maintenance workers and we lost one due to, um, a workman's comp issue. We lost all four of them and we are in the middle of an interview process to replace them. But we do plan on moving forward, um, even though we're not even up to staff as we planned to be. Anywhere near, we're actually below our staffing levels before. But it's taken so long that we're gonna be introducing a new Old Town Maintenance Worker, um, within the next week or two. But I'll talk more about that in the City Manager's Report as well.
Okay, I'm sure that wouldn't make much of a dent in the surplus, and it's already budgeted for anyway. But I, um, I wanted to take this opportunity to ask about it because you mentioned it explicitly in your presentation. So, um, thank you and looking forward to that in like two minutes.
We have another comment?
Uh, I was just wondering if we need to include in the motion, the, the first part that receives the fiscal year 2021.
Oh, and I was curious, do we need to add that amendment that you made about the number changing?
The correction.
Yeah.
I would say yes to the correction, definitely. You can just say as amended.
Okay.
I don't think you need to be explicit here. It's, it's clear and it's in the record. That the, the motion is with the correction.
Okay. It's like, should I say, I'd like to amend the motion or just?
As amended?
No.
No, it's a different type of amendment. Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, uh, amended fiscal year 2021, 22 fiscal year budget. Wait a second, let me start over. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive the fiscal year 21, 22, um, budget, fiscal year budget review. The FY 21, 20, it's there twice, so that kind of, uh, receive the budget, fiscal year budget review and adopt a resolution of the City Council amending the fiscal year 21, 22 amended budget. Will that work?
I think with the discussion, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
People watching closely will be able to, to make sense of this.
I'll, I'll still second that. Um, sounds like you included the correction, uh, as, as described by staff. Great.
Thank you.
Did we hear from Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, yes, go ahead. Yes.
Thank you.
You didn't hear it from him, I vote yes.
Okay, so motion approved unanimously.
Great, thank you. Um, so, moving on, there are no reports or action items. Future agenda items, does any, do any members of the council wish to propose an item replacement on a future agenda? Councilmember Castellano.
Um, I am interested in having staff bring together, bring forward information about, um, a moratorium on drive-throughs, um, and what that might look like. I'm just curious if other council members are interested in that.
I, I have a question about that.
Uh, yeah, I just have a question. I mean, um, what, what's the intent?
We can't really discuss it, I think.
Oh, we can't?
Maybe I can't talk about the intent, but I can just talk about the context a little bit in that, uh, there's a number of drive-through restaurants along the 101 corridor in Eureka. And, um, I'm interested in exploring the idea of limiting the expansion of the number of drive-through restaurants in Eureka. And, and perhaps, uh, uh, options or, or choices around that.
Oh, I'm raising my hand. So would that include, um, coffee places? Like Jitter Bean?
I mean, I think staff could, I think staff could bring forward some, maybe a spectrum of conversation around that.
So it sounds like you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, it sounds like you're talking more about corporate than local. I know we're not supposed to be, I'm just curious, before I ask, or before I agree.
Well, this was a discussion that we had in our Development Services Meeting with Planning. There are examples of moratoriums out there and we could bring back a menu of options for consideration by the council if that's what council desires.
I support placing it on the agenda. I do too, to, to have more discussion.
I support discussion.
Scott gave a thumbs up, so it looks like, uh, yes. We'll bring it back for discussion. Does anyone else have a future agenda item? Okay, hearing done. We'll move forward to the City Managers Reports. I heard it's very exciting.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So I just wanted, I hope Director Woods on here, because I wanted to give some kudos to our, um, Community Services Department. Um, we have a couple of projects that have been, um, ongoing for a very long time and for too long of a time. One of those projects is Ross Park. Um, Ross Park has had a surfacing problem for at least the 16 years that I've been here. And we've not had the ability due to budgetary issues to take care of Ross Park in the manner that it needed to. And luckily with the partnership with Mercer Frasier Company and them, um, getting together with us on replacing the surfacing and fixing some other amenities, it's, it almost looks like a new park. This is still in construction mode, some of the components of the playground, this is a picture of Ross Park with the new surfacing. There are new tiles that are soft and ADI compliant. Um, we're still waiting on a couple of components of the existing playground structure, but we have added two new spinners to the playground structure and they're very popular. Um, and we've also worked with Mercer Frasier on some other improvements. There's been some, uh, you can see here, there's been some edges that have issues that they're grinding and patching. And then in the playground area, there is an asphalt concrete, um, area that was eroding. They're replacing a, um, concrete curb in that area there. So anyway, these improvements should be done, um, likely by the end of the week, these ones. And then we'll make some more improvements, bring in some more chips. Um, it's been very well received from the communities. We've got a lot of compliments from our park staff and that's something that's, um, been long awaited. Some of the funding came from our infrastructure funding from Measure H, but, um, the majority of it came from a per capita Prop 68 state grant. And so we wanna thank the state for this, as well as Mercer Frasier for helping us improve this park. And of course, the volunteers who did the wonderful plate, paint job on all of the amenities at the park as well. Um, we were talking about Old Town. Um, I'll talk about the strategic visioning and the, and the, um, position for the Old Town Maintenance Worker. Like I stated, we have had three different recruitments. We've hired four different people. They've either resigned or not worked out. Um, we have another recruitment right now and we're hopeful. Um, regardless of that recruitment, we have an intention on assigning one of our existing maintenance workers that has volunteered to do this and is interested in being the Old Town Maintenance Worker and bringing back the Old Town Maintenance Worker. It'll, um, that maintenance worker will have a route that goes from basically, uh, Commercial Street all the way up to, um, the Carson Mansion and between Waterfront out to, well, Waterfront Drive out to Fifth, uh, Fourth and Fifth Street. And that will be their route and that'll be their area of responsibility to not only maintain landscaping, but to deal with any litter issues. Also, um, uh, do the maintenance on the Old Town restroom. But as a part of this, before we got into that, we wanted to invest some money into the landscape areas and make them consistent. So we hired a consultant to develop a pallet of native plantings. And so we are out removing all of the existed vegetation, which is no easy task. As you can see here, there's still some work to be done, but this is the beginning stages of some of the landscaped areas being torn out. Um, I also wanna thank Samar Restoration who's working with us, on us, with us as well. But, um, the intent is to take all of those landscaped areas, mainly on Second Street, between, um, C all the way up to the Carson Mansion and making them consistent. And so this is the beginning of that. They have completed the landscape strip that's out in front of the Oberon on the left and also out in front of Many Hands Gallery on the right. They've also did some patching of that planter as well. And here's an example of one of the planters that is, um, out in front of Humboldt Bay Provisions that has been done. So you can't see the plants very well here, but there's natives' plants in there and they have the same pallets, um, in each one of these landscaped areas. And so, once this is completed, um, it'll be the maintenance worker's responsibility to maintain this and we'll keep this consistent theme throughout Old Town. I'd also like to say that, um, I'd also like to say that with the Measure H funding, obviously paving is a huge component of that Measure H funding and all of Old Town will be on the paving schedule for the summer of 2023. And Old Town will be paved at that time as well. So, that is all I have. If there's any question you guys should have, let me know.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Arroyo?
So, we know that this is a part of the vision for that role. Could you just speak a little bit to the cleanup role that they'll have as well? Not, I guess, not just in maintaining landscaping and beautification, but trash abatement in Old Town?
Yeah, so, I mean, it'll be landscaping, it'll be, you know, all of our parks maintenance workers do the maintenance of all the restrooms at the parks. They also clean up all the litter and deal with all the other amenities associated at the parks that we would consider Old Town and the other amenities, whether it's the trash enclosures, the Old Town restroom, the different gathering areas, Clark Plaza, those type of areas as being their responsibility. So, that will be a part of their route and we'll make sure that those areas are taken care of. We are going to introduce this maintenance worker at the Main Street Meeting in March so that they become familiar with them and so they know the face and they can contact that person when they have some issues that arise. We will also alternate the schedule for this maintenance worker. That'll be from Tuesday through Saturday. And we're looking at potentially on Friday and Saturday, depending on events, kind of flexing that schedule so that they have more coverage during those events as well.
And are they going to continue coordinating with the Uplift Eureka Program and the Rescue Mission and other programs that do beautification in Old Town? How does that, how do you picture that working?
Yeah, they typically, currently already, the Job School Training Program that Uplift has, has been on hold. I think it's going to be starting to kick up again and start gaining more momentum as we, you know, get through the pandemic and those type of things. So, yes, they already have joined our park staff, whether it's at the golf course or whether that's one of our parks to provide job school training skills for them. And then also currently now that the city is overseeing, provide the executive director to Main Street, they still partner with the Rescue Mission to do work and we continue to do that. This will provide a more consistent contact. It's been difficult with that partnership before because we didn't have somebody designated down there and so it took our harbor staff away from their responsibilities. And so, now we'll have the partnership not only with the harbor staff that's kind of covered this area, but we'll have somebody designated down there the whole time for it.
Any questions or comments? Well, I have some comments. I went to the park today, to Ross Park. This has been so long coming and there were people out there playing on the spinners and I love the color of the mat underneath. It's night and day over there. It's just incredible. And I'm so thankful to Donna and the people that put this together because it was rough going for a while there trying to get those, trying to get people motivated. Not our staff, by the way, I just wanted to clarify that. But it's just amazing and every time I see that building, I feel a total amount of joy. It's just like a happy place to drive by. So, thank you for that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was the new planters. And I just wanted to talk about, so I believe that this came forward from a community member about having the palette for the plant material, right? The idea of having plant material for the...
Yeah, it arose from some complaints. We worked with a local consultant.
Sure, sure. But I just wanted to give a shout out to Patty Callison who came forward and really advocated for a palette that was going to be consistent and beautiful for our city. So, I know that she contacted me about it, so I'm, and I'm pretty sure she talked to you about it.
She never contacts me.
Yeah. So, and I love that it's going to be a consistent pattern and that it's going to be, you know, it's already beautiful down there, but we're just going to have more and more of that. And, you know, people think sometimes, I hear at least, that, you know, why would you want to put money towards beautification? And people thrive, here's why, because people thrive in beautiful places. People thrive in beauty. We found that in Montessori, you know, kids lived in a tenement housing and when they started to, to start to appreciate and look at beauty, their whole attitude and outlook changed. And so, I think it's really important to continue on that and moving forward. So, I'm just really feeling very grateful and thankful for these projects. So many great projects are coming forward with our parks. So, thank you. Nothing further? So, we will move on to our council reports. Does anybody have a council report for this evening?
I'll be quick. Let's see, just attending quite a few meetings, Eureka Main Street, Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. Just so folks know, there's going to be upcoming in March, I believe on March 31st, but the date's still being set, a strategic visioning session for REDEC. And then I did attend the RCEA meeting and the HWMA meeting. I want to let folks know, we're still, you know, the compost and CRV challenges our region faces are difficult and we're still working on it. I'm now part of a special subcommittee to work on it and doing quite a bit of advocacy for cultural districts. And then tomorrow is Read Across America Day. I'll be going into Alice Burney School and reading to some kids there, so I'm excited for that. And that's what I've been up to.
That's going to be so fun. Councilmember Arroyo?
Great. Well, I'll go through a few things. So, first off, there is a student at Alice Burney School who is in fourth grade, who has studied maps all over the world of infrastructure, basically just obsessed with municipal planning and bike and pedestrian safety, transportation safety. And this student presented to the local Safe Routes to Schools Task Force about some infrastructure improvements that he would recommend around Alice Burney School. And so, immediately, our city staff said we would be willing to meet with this student and walk around the student and their principal. And, but the presentation was pretty stellar, y'all. It was like mapping and, you know, drawings, but also like diagrams and using Google Maps and kind of a number of formats of showing, you know, where infrastructure improvements might go. The bulk of them were things like improved crosswalks and things like those flags on stop signs that help you notice them a little more. You know, some of them might be low cost and some might be kind of future planning ideas. Frankly, as someone who looks at some transportation elements, you know, in, I wouldn't call myself an expert, but I certainly know a bit about them. And I was really impressed with the scale of the students' thinking. So, anyway, we'll be continuing to meet with that student, but I just wanted to share how cool it was that, that he was putting that level of attention into it. Met with some business owners in Old Town to really kind of talk through some challenges they're having around safety and security and maintenance. And so, that was a really productive conversation and I was really impressed frankly with the level of attention that city staff provided. And I, I think it showed me that when people ask us for support to brainstorm ways to improve safety and security of their, of their property or adjacent properties that affect them, I think we do have resources to bring to that, including mini grants through the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Program. And I'm not sure that folks fully realize that. I think we get a lot of complaints about maintenance, but perhaps not as many applications for that mini grant, which involves consultation with EPD and other resources in the city. So, I would just say, please contact us, contact any of us if you're interested in that program and please remember to tell residents about it when they contact us. Let's see, just a couple more notes that I made. Well, I serve on the Klamath River Renewal Corporation Board, which isn't an appointment of the city, but it is something really near and dear to my heart. And we're making some pretty substantial progress with the next steps to remove the Klamath Dams and I'm really excited about it. And I don't know if you have all read in the news that many of the environmental compliance documents are proceeding and a lot of the boring but important stuff that was really big and, you know, could have posed a big barrier is, is moving forward. So, I'm always happy to talk about the Klamath if anyone wants to. And that project will also have some really great benefits for the region as far as employment opportunities and restoration of the watershed. So, I think we'll see benefits here as well as, you know, within the Klamath River Basin itself, of course. I think that's all I need to speak to. There are a bunch of other meetings that happened, but none of them had outcomes that I need to talk about right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Hi there. Thank you. Been doing a few interesting meetings. I keep mentioning the diversity equity and inclusion work that the city's doing because I keep going to these sessions and they're just wonderful and interesting. And of course, it's about the city as an employer, being diverse and equitable and including all kinds of different folks and all kinds of different voices. And the work that's happening is how to actually make that work. And it can be complicated, it can be challenging and it's really fascinating and inspiring to watch because I think when the city as an employer, as public servants, better represents the diversity of our city, then they'll better, we will better serve the city. And I'm just really excited to see Eureka moving in that direction and continuing that difficult work or that potentially difficult work. I too attended the HWMA meeting. Everybody, start a compost pile just right now, just start one. If you have the space to do it, go ahead and do that. I personally, I have a yard for the first time since I've lived in Eureka and I'm going to try and figure out how to do that. I'm one of those people that wishes they were good at gardening, but isn't. But it'll be a good responsible thing to do and it's going to save some hassle in the long run. No matter what we do with our food waste, the smallest footprint that doesn't involve any plastic, that doesn't involve any, any cars or any transportation into or out of the area is to just take care of it right in your own space, if that's possible. I attended the Parking Stakeholder Meeting today around parking in Old Town. And I think that it's been really interesting. It's really good to see actual solid data, actual numbers and to get different perspectives of people who are in favor of transitioning, moving forward, folks who are wanting to work around a middle path, folks who are opposed to any change at all. And there is a diversity of voices. There's a balance of voices there. Sometimes at these meetings, we just get the folks who are opposed to something and maybe one voice in favor. But really, the stuff that's coming in and writing and the things that we're seeing in these stakeholder meetings and public is much more across the board of folks who want to see Eureka become a more walkable city. And that is the last meeting I went to, so that's the last one on my mind. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I just want to first thank Councilmember Castellano for covering for me, for RCEA. I was out of town last week, so I appreciate that. I want to make sure that people know that the Greenways and Gulches Survey is out there online and it's really easy. It takes five minutes and it's going to basically help inform how we go about developing that ordinance or our greenways and gulches, how are we going to deal with them? You know, we're going to, they're great amenities for the city, so please fill out those surveys. It's really important for everybody to weigh in on that. And then, you know, I heard something, I want a chance to pontificate a little bit about sense of community. And, you know, we're entering a new phase of the pandemic and things are loosening up and I hope one of the speakers said, you know, there's so much division in our community nationwide, really, right? But how do we, how do we get through that, you know, and start talking again about issues that affect our community beyond, you know, vaccines and masks and all these other things? So, I'm just hopeful that we're going to enter a new phase of being, you know, close to one another, talking even when we have different opinions. And I hope people really think about that and try and reach out to those that we may have had conflict with, you know? And, because the city's doing great things. As, as you can see, we're looking fiscally really good and I'm excited about the future. I just hope that we're, we're more, you know, receptive to other opinions and talk to each other and have a much more fun time. I'm looking to more fun this year, so. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, thank you so much for telling us about that kid. I love that that is our future. We have people like that in our community. It's just, what a gift. Thank you so, I mean, that just made my night. Best thing all day for me. But what I wanted to talk about was illegal dumping. Over it. Over it. So, currently, I've been working with a private property owner and a cleanup crew, not my cleanup crew, he's paying the cleanup crew, to work in a green belt we, we know as the honey hole. It's, you know, it's been a negative attraction, just, it was full of trash, it's been horrible. And that is now coming to a place where it's, it's getting cleaned up and it's phenomenal. And so, what happens with that, what's interesting to me is that people put, the people that are doing the cleanup, they're using their particular type of bag, right? So, they're a specific color. And the, the people that go through trash bags in that type of situation, they know whose bags those bags are. So, they don't get into those bags. However, at that same site that I'm just discussing now, there's a huge pile of somebody's trash from their house. And it's just really frustrating because the more we attempt to move ahead, people continue to do this illegal dumping and blame it on the homeless. And, you know, I'm not saying that there's not some validity to some of that, but frankly, we have, we have trash service here, we have the dump. I mean, find a friend and take it to the dump if you can get it to the green waste or if you can get it to the green belt, you can get it to the dump. You know, it's just, I was driving by today and I was just so incredibly frustrated that half of the bags that they'd cleaned up, the other side, it was half the same size of somebody's personal trash, somebody's personal trash. So, I, our environment is critical. It's really important that we manage and maintain it. And that's why, you know, people like Pack Out Green Team are out in the green belts, you know, doing the cleanups. We have a lot of teams that go out and do this kind of work all the time. They do not want to be picking up your household trash. There's enough out there to be done. So, I'm, I'm just hopeful, I'm sorry, I'm really frustrated by the whole thing, and I'm just hopeful people will hear me and like think, like, should I take my garbage bags out and put them in the beautiful green belt near our waterways? No, maybe not. Maybe that's not a great idea, you know? Please be considerate. I mean, you know, this is where we live. We all live here and we all need to do our portions, if you will, right? Everybody needs to do their part. And so, I would encourage you to please take your household trash somewhere else than our green belts, our parks and all of these different places. And I think the community might also appreciate that. You know, we hear about all this trash everywhere. It just, it's, anyway, I'm going to stop with the trash and I'm going to move on to something a little bit more fun. And that is my last thing that I want to talk about. I just want to remind everybody, you know, you were talking about, we were talking about how divisive our community is and worldwide and all this business. And I think one of the simplest ways to make that impact, make an impact on that behavior is by one kind thing a day to somebody that you don't know or you do know, one kind action per day. If we did that, I talked about this over the summer, 29,000 kind things would happen a day, a day. And it would be 800, what did I say it was a month? It was like 870,000, 870,000 kind things in a month. Now, that's one thing a day, that's just being kind. Now, if we multiply that by 12 months, I can't say that number, 10,440,000 kind deeds in one year. Incredible. Makes a huge impact on a community. We, we're a community and we need to get along. This is just over it. All right. On that happy note, if there's no further comment, I'd like to adjourn. Thank you. Thanks for all for coming.